Agenda, one would be the update progress of new school buildings presented by Larry Hadley and Lane Finley. Once they are completed, we would then have a presentation on policy 8200, which is a review of information presented by Heidi and Nick. So Larry, please.
Right. For superintendent.
Nope, you're good. Great board. While Larry and Lane are getting set up, can I just, I know you know this already, but these two are unbelievably fantastic in terms of their role in the, in the new school and the new build. So I just want to give them a shout out. What a great job they're both doing.
Thank you. I have to agree. I've heard the same thing. Do you need one of these to record?
Here, you're gonna need that. Yep, just press the button. Larry, it might be best, unless you want to be there. Why don't we go right there?
By here.
Yeah. Use that.
Board and superintendent, it's a privilege to be here with you today to update you on our construction projects. We wanted to start, Lane's actually taken some video with a drone to give you the most recent pictures. Today I met with the junior high. Every Wednesday we meet and do a site walk and what's called an OAC meeting, an owner, architect, contractor meeting. We do that on Thursdays for the high school and the elementary we do every other Wednesday afternoon down in Salt Lake until we break ground, which is coming very soon. So we just want to take a minute and kind of update you on all three builds and we're going to start off with Lane's video just to show you some pictures.
All right, I'll give you just a little background before we get started. A few years ago, we, we had a need to have some drone footage. We needed some aerials and stuff and it's quite expensive to hire somebody to do that. And so I thought, oh, it can't be that hard to get a drone license, right? And we'll just do it ourselves. It was a little more challenging, I thought, because I don't know anything about being a pilot, but they, they want you to know that kind of stuff. But, so about three years ago, I went got my license and we purchased a drone and we've used it a lot at school sites for assessments and of course for our bond projects, not only current projects, but going back and highlighting past projects on, on past bonds. And so it's really been a great resource and it's a great escape for me to go out, fly and hopefully not end up in a tree somewhere. But we've saved a lot of money doing that way. So this video is about three minutes. It's just going to give you an overview of the projects that are currently under construction. The new high school, Westfield, the new junior high, Mountain View. And, and so those two projects will be highlighted on the video and you'll see where we're at. I tried to do it as progression, so you'll see when we started with the big open fields and then where we're at as of just a couple of weeks ago.
Will you cover the challenges so far?
I can do that. Opening August 24th. That is correct. We are on track and I just asked Lane if he could kind of back it up. Mountain View is the first school you saw the Mavericks and I just wanted to talk about the junior high real quick, just so you can see what actually has been built and what you're actually viewing. He's just gonna get a little further.
Are those tilt up walls or are those CME?
Those are ICF, the outside walls.
I just had the number backwards.
Yeah, yeah. Just a little further to get that. Yeah, that'd be great. Is that okay? Couple of things, a couple of highlights I want to point out to you. This is, school is on track and going up very, very quickly. Every slab has been poured and we have walls decked in. In fact, this first part of the building you can see on the far left is, that's area A and that's your science pod and they are actually starting to sheet rock that.
Really?
Yep, started today. The next area, and that's the science pod, and then you get your learning stairs kind of in the middle and the next pod you can see is some classrooms. The middle part, you can start to see just a few walls is your office and then turn and you get your cafeteria, gymnasium, and CTE area. You can see kind of the parking lot areas and the reason I asked Lane to stop on this is kind of something interesting. If you can see on the corner of the building itself, you'll see where the two side walls are, they're both kind of black and above them. That's actually where the marquee is going to go. It is not a normal marquee, it's a screen TV and it's on both sides. So as parents drop off, they'll be able to see it and you can see it from 2700.
Plus it's not up in the air.
Correct.
Country community.
And we can dim it at night.
Perfect.
So there's no lights. But I can't express enough how, how well this one's going. We've actually worked with the seminary. If you want to know where that is, it's kind of straight off. Ivory Holmes is building right behind there. Yep, and the seminary is going to kind of sit right in that area.
They've already secured property and some, or at least.
Yep, Ivory Holmes gave them two lots.
Really?
And we worked, mm-hmm, and we worked with their architect.
Gave them two, huh?
Two, yep.
Well, kind of.
Well, they didn't even give me the details and I didn't ask. As long as we get a seminary building.
That'll be fine.
Yeah. You'll see the bus drop off is kind of off to the left where your student drop off is the parking lot you're looking at and then your fields kind of wrap around behind and they're in the front. It is coming along very, very well. Is there, one of the things about that marquee is I had to bring in Nick last week because when we talk issues, I want to give you this one issue, it is still materials. We are trying to order materials a year in advance just to reconcile any issues that may come. Decked on is it just a, just a problem, but we're trying to get all of our switches and electrical, anything of that nature in as early as we possibly can. We did the bleachers. It was a discussion with Brock and Matt to get the bleachers ordered and the colors and the logo on them. So we have everything in advance ordered up. Had a great OAC meeting today. Any questions I can answer for you on the junior high? Great.
There's fencing up, is there not?
Fencing all around it. Yep, fencing all around it. And if you're looking, the road has been paved. We paved the road that's just Wilson Lane. It's been paved all the way back. We just haven't striped it because we don't want people driving on it. But it's worked out very well. That road right there is paved all the way down. If you look real close, bus stops right there.
Yes, it is. It's stone thrown.
Yep.
So is that, is that piece of property to the green where Lane's cursor is? Is that the park that West, or the West Haven City is trying to develop?
Not that piece. No, not that I, Ivory Holmes is right up to that and I think it's just the next piece. You can see a box in the middle?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's just past that.
Okay. All right, that's what I was wondering.
Okay. Lane, do you mind going to the high school?
This has two, this has two gyms, right?
Two gyms. Yep, two gyms, one on each level.
Oh, we stacked them.
One gym on the first level and then stacked them kind of offset a little bit. And there's a track that runs all the way around the top.
Okay, so I was in the mindset of south when we.
No, not side, they're above each other and offset just a bit.
Perfect. That's a great plan.
It's gonna, it's gonna work out well. Yep. Moving to the high school site, we're looking at the Westfield. What I wanted to show here is kind of what they're building first. These are your areas of your gym, your weight room, and your lockers are going up first. That's what these buildings are right here. You can see over here on the right, kind of in the front portion, you can see the footprint of the footings. The issue with these guys is the cement. We're finally back up to speed and Hogan has done a wonderful job. We had about 52 to 55 employees and we bumped it to 72 because they brought in two other footings and foundation crews to catch up. So the footprint tomorrow will actually be finished of this school. So that's pretty important for us. It's going up very well. Materials is an issue, it's just so much bigger and there's just so much more. I sit in these BIM, these BIM meetings, which is a 3D meeting where they show you all the pipes, conduits, and then they start turning it and moving it. It's like the lagoon, right? And I start throwing up about 20 minutes into it. I'm like, you gotta slow down on the turn. It's just amazing how much work goes into one of these. Architects have been working really hard. Hogan's doing a great job. The issue we have here besides materials is once again water. And I can just spend a minute if you don't mind. This road right here is 4300. 4300 has every possible utility running down it. And no one's really set a standard, which was our problem. I feel a better analogy is like, we're the last dog to the bowl. Because when you cut open that road, which we done, we were supposed to be looking at a 24 inch sewer pipe and it's 42 inches.
Oh.
But that's not the biggest problem. There is a pressured gas line and then Hooper's irrigation line and Hooper irrigation line is 18 inches below the road. And you're supposed to have a foot between each pipe. So between the Hooper irrigation, the sewer pipe, the gas pipe, and there's two other pipes, so we're still working on the entities, we'd be about nine feet deep where we'd have to pump it from one side of the road to the other. We've offered four different solutions and have been shot down, but that's okay. We've got solution five, six, and seven we're working on and we're closing in on draining those fields. What I'm talking about is the collection ponds here in the front and that's the fields back there, the baseball and softball. And actually from last week, the backstops and fencing are in.
Oh, really?
Yep. The backstop and fencing is all in.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
You're okay.
Where you're at is football?
Football's right, right there. You're right on football. And if he comes over to the right, that's your softball and in front of that's your baseball.
Okay, and where are you to the east?
And there's a retention pond right behind the baseball. And then you come here, there's a parking lot.
Okay.
And then there's some retention ponds up here.
Okay.
We're landscaping those retention ponds to flow all together so we can flow it out north to a slough in the back there. That's our plan we're working on currently. We also met with the seminary building and it is all fenced off. There are some issues before we got it fenced. I think Hogan lost a golf cart one day, was stolen at night, but it is now all fenced off.
So where is that?
Where's the fence?
Where the cursor is? No, the seminary building.
Seminary building is going to be kind of down here where this red line is.
Okay, down by the church.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's exactly right. And as you walk out of the school, there's kind of, you walk through that parking lot right to the seminary building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. It's, it's still on time. Hogan, we met six, seven weeks ago and we redid their timeline knowing the cement is from back nine weeks. So we were able to do a lot of different things, kind of out of order of construction, but it's, it's all going to mesh together. So they've been great on that as well. We don't have any pictures of the elementary, but I'd just like to take just a minute to talk about the elementary. We got the agreements yesterday. I forwarded those to Robert and to Heidi. It's not the GMP, but it's actually the contractual agreements, kind of the boilerplate stuff that every contractor uses that Robert and Heidi are reviewing. The draft, the design documents are at 90% and so they're going out to the subs right soon and we plan to break ground in December. So completion date there is June of 2024. Lane, Nick, Dave and I, with along with eight MHTN, sat down with a big group and we went over the safety for the elementary. We, we looked at every pond, door, tree, bollard, entry, exit. It was kind of a long meeting. Nick was great. I was like, Nick, this is gonna be long. And he was great. We have a great safety plan. I thought Lane did a wonderful job and Dave as well. And from that safety plan, we moved forward to our door hardware plan. So the elementary is coming along and remember that is from Westland, not Hogan. So those are our three builds. Can I answer any possible questions for you?
Have they solved concrete problems?
Yes, it's coming back, it's not back on schedule. It's, they have it, now it's kind of a little bit of the mercy who they're delivering to. But yeah, we're, we're way better than we were. That's correct. Yep. All right. One of our issues is Rocky Mountain Power. We need some power poles moved, which was great. Rocky Mountain sent the holding pole crew, but I says, we can't hold it until you actually move it. And so they're like, that's about a pole. So we're trying to get the moving crew there first, but we're working with them and that's actually scheduled for October 8. But everything else, we should be on schedule. It's, it's a big bill. It's a beautiful building. I try to keep superintendent Butters probably too informed with my questions and texts, but we are working on each building and we plan to 2024 open all three.
Thank you, Larry. We only do this once every 30 years, so.
Well, I don't think we've ever done three at the time.
I don't know that we've ever done.
There's a lot of meetings and sometimes I'm like, okay, I'll get back to you on that. But it's, it's been great. The contractors on both sides and the architects, you've got some good people working with you. So thanks for your time and anytime you can ask me a question, I can be reached every day. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
You bet.
Thank you, Larry and Lane and everybody that helped to get that workshop together. And now we will go to Nick and Heidi, please.
Hi.
Do you want this?
This is fine.
We'll share. We like seeing a duet.
I just, okay.
Donnie, I'm very excited. We're presenting the library policy review, the library review policy. It's been a long day. To the board tonight for approval on second reading and we wanted to let the board know in this setting, some of the changes that were made will obviously show this in open meeting as well with the, during the regular board session. We continue to receive lots of feedback. I believe superintendent Butters compiled all the feedback that we received and sent that to you. Even after she received or compiled all that feedback, there was additional feedback and then she, I think she sent that on to you. So know that those of us who have been working on the policy, review every email, every letter. I don't think we had any phone calls that you took, but everything that came in from, from the public. And at the end of the day, we determined to make a couple of changes. One of the changes is the list that is identified as, is what, what is the basis of the criteria for determining if something is educationally suitable as books are selected and then also as books are challenged on the grounds of being not educationally suitable, what criteria are we going to look at and weigh? We heard some feedback that the list is lengthy and could we condense that and narrow it down a little bit? So, so we did that. We took the list out to the folks whose job it is to engage in the selection process, the librarians in our district, and they went through it and said, yeah, there's some things that probably aren't necessary on this list and there are some things that really say the same thing in a couple of different sections. But they did reiterate, and Nick can speak to this in more detail because he's the one who had the conversation with them, they did reiterate how important it is to have a broad selection criteria because there are so many reasons that a librarian chooses to select a particular book for, for his students. There are reasons that might apply to one kid, another reason to pick a different book for, for another kid, and their job is really to present a wide array of materials for the entire student body. And so while they recognized that some of the criteria was redundant and not necessary, they also urged Nick to let the board know how important it is to have a lengthier rather than a skinnier list because they want to make sure that they are bringing in folks that are a wide array of materials. And if you look at the list, there's, there's not very many that we think ought to be removed because they really are all things that librarians look at for determining if it's something to bring into the library. And of course, I don't know if we mentioned this in past meetings, but it's rarely one factor that a librarian says, oh, this is, this is why we need this, this is accurate and timely, let's bring it in. It's usually a lot of the factors and in fact, the more factors from the list a particular piece of material, particular work has, then the greater the argument for bringing it into the library. And so they're not just looking to see, oh, A is checked, let's select that book, let's bring it in. They're looking at all of these factors in a, you know, as a whole and in determining based on the entire content of the book and the, a lot of different criteria, whether or not it would be appropriate for the, the library. Do you want to add anything else to that?
I would, I would just, I maybe say, when, when I sent the email to the librarians, I asked them, I said, you know, think about your actual selection process. When you look at a book, what are the things you're thinking of and, and match those to the words there and if there's something that doesn't belong, we'll remove it. And I just want to attest to the, to this, this process has been valuable for me in my own career development is, you know, I, I feel like the librarians in general were, were feeling more like, hey, let's leave this, let's leave it a really lengthy list. And Heidi and I tend to agree with the public feedback we were getting that said, no, we could pare this down a little bit. And so then we approached them and said, let's, that's how you said, is there, is there a way that, words that mean the same thing? Are there ways we could pare this down? And I, I really felt like the selection criteria here is a testament, it's, it's a testament to the, a testament, sorry, to the us working together with the community to try to have a policy that fits every student. Because again, the library is the hub of learning in the school and the, the selection criteria, the way that it's landed here, to me is, I'm, I'm quite pleased with it.
Does the board have any questions about that particular change? Great, yes.
Do you engage all of the librarians?
Certified librarians. So there's, there's, there's elementary librarians that they are aides and, and I approached the secondary certified librarians that have a degree in library science.
Any other questions? Okay. The other change we, we made, and I know you've seen a lot of feedback about the makeup of the reconsideration committee and whether we have identified an appropriate makeup of that committee. The previous draft of the policy that was presented last month included three educators and, excuse me, four educators, a library media specialist, the administrator, and two teachers, and three parents. Parents coming from community council, the PTA, and we had presented one parent selected at random. Based on the feedback we received to add more parents to that committee, we, we did. We added another parent to the committees and now there are four employees of the school district and four parent representatives. The parent representatives would be made up of a member of the school's community council, a member of the school's PTA, and then two that are selected randomly through the list of enrolled students at the school. Again, any parent can decline to sit on the reconsideration committee and if they do, then the administrator would just go to the next person on the list. Any questions about the makeup of the committee? Okay. The only other change we made is that we did realize and we've had lots of discussions about this particular point, with an even number of individuals on a reconsideration committee, there's a possibility that there could be a tie where four individuals say we think that book should be retained and four individuals say we think the book should be removed. And we, we hope it's not broken down by employee versus parents. We hope that our employees and parents are all working together and that we may have two employees, two parents that say retain and two employees and two parents that they remove. But in the event that there's a tie, we, we wanted to present something in the policy that is tiebreaker and if there's a tie on a committee, it would go to the district reconsideration committee. So that the district then can go through the entire process again and look at what the school committee did and make the determination. And those are the only changes. Any questions or thoughts? Janice, you look like you have a question.
Just be sure to speak in your voice.
Please do.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Loud and clear.
I, first of all, appreciate the great deal of work that has gone in. Nick, Heidi, parents groups, superintendent, I'm very appreciative because I know that it hasn't been easy. My one thing that I, I can imagine, I just know that everyone will agree with, is I would ask that we have a total analysis of the success of the process, October 1, 2023. And talk about, you know, how, did you have trouble getting parents to be involved? How many questionable literary pieces came forward that were to be analyzed just real complete thorough so that we know if the process is effective and working?
I think it's a great idea. And it's a very good idea.
Yeah.
Any opposition?
I'll, I'll commit to, to making sure our library department keeps good record and track and.
I would love that. I think that would be very informative.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
That seems reasonable.
Do you want to speak to the website?
Yeah, so, and I, well, I, I was, I may pull up and show you, but we, you know, part of this is a reconsideration form that a parent needs to fill out. And early on, the feedback we got from the community was, let's, let's, let's don't make it a really arduous process because we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, people to not do it if, if they, if they feel strong. So we've already added on our school, on our Weaver School District website, if we go under departments and if you go under either, you know, digital teaching and learning, which is the department I'm under, or media services, there's a board policy link and you can click on that and already get to the reconsideration form. So that's already there as of today. So I, you know, I'm, I'm assuming if, if a parent wants to start the process, if, if the board approves the, the policy, the process could be started as soon as a parent feels it necessary.
Is that instant? I mean, does that take a day or a week?
To do the form?
Once the form's submitted.
So once the form is submitted, then it would be, it'd come in on the administrator to walk through depending on what the basis for the request for consideration is. If the base.
I meant the one for the individual student to be denied that book. Is that not?
Oh, yeah, if an individual, if a parent.
Yes.
Says, we don't want my child or that absolutely can be.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. So just to say that again, in case anybody didn't care, beginning, as soon as the board adopts this policy, if, the board adopts the policy, that if a parent requests that a particular work or book be restricted, that their student not be allowed access to that book in the library, then that student will not be allowed access to that book in the library. And we will be given, we'll tell, make sure the librarians are aware that you may be getting requests from parents that. be getting requests from parents that say, don't allow my kid to check out whatever book and, and please honor that.
We, we, that's already in the software.
How will that process work? Is it an electronic notification?
Yeah, so we asked in the policy that they, that the parent requested in writing and we'll keep, and we'll have the school keep record of that. And, um, the, the librarian in their software, in their, uh, checkout software, when they, when they pull up a student, boom, a note pops up. If there is a note on the student, a note will pop up next to the student's name.
Thank you.
Any other questions, yes, please?
Just got to go red. Standby.
Yep. I got one for you. It's all you.
What if the parent doesn't like a book in the classroom? Is that the same media?
That's a good question. That's a different process and we are working on that policy as well. Instructional material is defined in this law as any material that is used during instructional, uh, use for instruction, including library materials. This policy is specific to instructional material in the library media centers. Instructional material that's used for curriculum purposes is still subject to the same sensitive material restrictions. Um, and typically if a parent, this has been practiced for years and years, if a parent is not comfortable with a particular assignment or book that's being read in class, they can always reach out to the teachers, say, I'd like to have my child read a different assignment. But we will make that clear in a policy that we're working through to include the sensitive material language for curriculum instructional materials as well.
Thank you.
Board, do you have anything else?
Just thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, thank you. We will see you in, uh, fifteen minutes and, uh, we'll call this work session, study session to a close so that we can get our entertainment set up and ready. Board, we'll have a break. We'll see you at six o'clock.